It's 6:30 PM and I call to order this June 5, 2018 work session. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to discuss any remaining operation budget topics, to review the CIP planning years, and to go over budget adoption and capital ordinance resolutions. So I think we should start off about discussing and getting a feel for how long we want to discuss these items tonight and how we want to conduct the meeting, whether we want to do straw polls or more consensus or open discussions and then sort of see where it leads us. Does anyone have any thoughts about any of those topics?
I personally am happy with the budget as it is. I will discuss if needed.
I'm happy with the budget.
I'm happy with the budget. I'm here.
I'm happy with the budget too. I've said that before though.
Okay, so it sounds like we're good with the budget. They'll be presenting it to us on June 12 for our approval. Next item will be CIP planning years. I think we got a little handout that sort of will help that a little bit. Is that towards the end of this handout?
So in the back of your handout, I just made a copy of the manager's recommendation so that you have something to talk from if you want to look at the projects in the out years, if you feel like there's something that needs to be removed, something that needs to be added, we kind of need to have an understanding of that, or if everything's just fine and we move forward with it. So it's on the last page in your handout that was given to you. Looks like this. Yeah.
And that was in our budget book, I think, maybe page 77. Yeah, it shows on the bottom there. So I guess we should discuss how we want to discuss this. We should talk about planning years for 2020 to 2023, see if there's any other projects we want to be considering based on our discussion, and remind us that the debt capacity is limited until 2021. So any considerations for 2020 should be a cash outlay.
So the only thing that I've been pondering on, it came up, I spent the weekend meeting with folks Saturday and Sunday, and it was specifically, believe it or not, over the food hub. And what it was regarding with the food hub was the fact that we've laid sod, and one of the things that came up was if we laid sod, one rainstorm or one bit of rain when people are out there walking on it, is it all going to turn to mud? And then the second one was, was it the smartest way to prepare the surface even for 500 people of foot traffic on a weekend? Is it going to destroy all of the grass? And so that just came up, I thought, something to think about in Phase 2, if we may want to think of some type of other permeable surface so that we don't wind up in a situation sort of like the cricket field where we're having problems with the sod. So that came up probably 15 times, was why did you guys put sod there? So I just wanted to maybe discuss that and see if we can talk through it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wendell. We did spend a lot of time talking about grass, seeds, and sod. Initially, the Phase 1 project included seed throughout the project as the project proceeded and we realized how long that would take and how many times we might need to do that. Parks and Rec and Public Works, along with Kent Jackson, who is here to answer any specific questions, really evaluated, and the short story is, is they selected a very durable, it was a very specific selection of sod to meet these types of conditions. And then Steve Dickinson, our Parks and Grounds Maintenance Superintendent, has been personally overseeing not only the installation but the regular watering and monitoring it, and it's actually part of the reason why we have continued to delay the groundbreaking in conjunction with our partners is to allow it to take. We discussed that need to replenish it and actually felt sod at the end for that portion of the site might be the better selection. We did use seed for behind the mulch in an area that we would have more time to let it grow and take.
So just so for my edification, the type of sod itself is more of a, for lack of a better word, a heavy-duty type of sod that would, is supposed to withstand a lot of foot traffic. That's the only message I want to be able to take back is that it was a specific type of sod.
Yes, sir. And what we can do in some of our messaging is make sure we provide that kind of information to make sure people know that we did make those kinds of considerations.
Perfect, that's awesome. Thank you.
To that, piggyback on that, most of Parks and Recs had a lot of discussion with Jerry at the back. They use drought-resistant Bermuda grass, and they plant it only during the summertime and the temperatures are very high, from what I understand. And that's very high drought resistant so that they can take a lot of foot traffic. And that's the reason, like, it's hard to grow, but only certain temperature when it can grow, is what I've been told by Parks and Recs when I asked in the past.
And I think there's some rye in there, but, and I could make a joke about being in the weeds, but we don't want weeds there, we want grass.
Did anyone else have any comments? We have three items that are being funded in this budget year. The Green Fairview Stormwater Improvements, the Food Hub Phase 2 that we were just talking about, and the Public Works Facility, that's just the design portion. Sounds like we're all okay with those three remaining in the budget year, is that correct?
Actually, there's five. There's five in our attachment.
Well, there's a few more. Those that are listed in the capital budget include items that are either exist amendments to existing capital projects, so they don't necessarily fall in this capital budget column that you see on your proposed capital investment program. So there's a little co-mingling there in that particular action item.
For pointing that out, thank you, yes. Marush Link?
Yes, I would just, in the past years, we've separated the two, so I appreciate staff coming up with a resolution, kind of defining that so there's, the public and future councils have an expectation of what to expect. This is all fluid based on a lot of things. And it's, again, it's not geared towards, in the past, it's been geared maybe towards tax increases, things like that, and the public, it was transparent, the fact that they knew that, but, so I would just, as I've said before, not to get on my pulpit, but, that I still have concerns, but I'm willing to, again, I already said I'm willing to the budget, just as we proceed down this road, though, I think there are things that are going to happen. There may be other priorities that we want to have time to discuss later on and put those forward. That's also, and for instance, I'll bring up the town, I would say the Public Works Facility. I'm not against finding, doing everything short of design work on that, much like we did for the public library. The idea that we can have it sited at a location, figure out where the roads are going to go, but I still have trouble putting in a concept when we don't know how big a building it would be. Maybe we want to make it green, really green. Maybe we want to make it more of a, you know, a bold statement about Morrisville and our architecture, something like that, depending on where it sits. But I'm more concerned about, do we even own all, and we don't have to answer it now, but do we own all the land back there? We're going to have to do a land swap. Do we have to do other things? But, so I just don't want to go down the road where I mentioned in the past where we come up with a design that we don't, we don't use, or we have to change it so much that because the project couldn't be started and at this certain time, because, again, I think I'm big in now, or we said it before, but execution, we have a lot of projects out there. So that's my words for tonight.
Okay, good, so there is a significant amount of design money there, and that's not happening on July 1, I assume. You guys are going to be coming back to us with sort of a plan for how that's going to work and how much input we're going to have throughout the process? Is that accurate, staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, if I could sort of add several components, let me start with the Public Works Facility, and Mayor Colley is correct, we don't start spending that money on July 1. We're working with a partner. There is still lots of work before we would determine some of those components about land swap and when that project would start and what we're looking at. And that is a significant enough contract, we would be bringing that back to you, and at that point, we could have lots of additional discussion about some of the nuances of that project. Just a reminder, that one's just related to the Aviation Parkway, so there's some time sensitivity, but you will see and discuss that one again. So I appreciate your comments, and I think that we can address some of your concerns when we bring that back. Regarding overall the CIP, we will make sure in our messaging, and I'm speaking as well to Councilmember Johnson as well as the group, is we typically put together a budget snapshot, some abbreviated information for the public. We can make some additional efforts to be very clear what the CIP is, what you've approved, what you've authorized, how it stays flexible, that they will continue to be involved, that's all precursors to any bond discussion we have, and we can, again, clearly make sure that message is clear even in those materials after you would adopt a budget this year.
Yeah, Martha, in this CIP, I had asked about the intersection of McCrimmon and Davis, and I didn't see anything back on that.
Yeah, that is actually going to come through the operating budget after Ben gets additional information, so we're planning on that one through operating budget revenue or expenditures.
Mayor Protam, Skargun, Johnson.
I'm not really clear why none of the transportation projects that were proposed that increased the connectivity across our town, such as International Drive Extension, Morrisville East Connection, Odyssey Drive Extension, or the Town Hall Drive, medians and bike lanes, none of them are prioritized for the entire five-year future planning years, and I think that we will want to have some of those extensions and connections soon. As the McCrimmon Extension becomes live, these extensions and connectors are going to increase our throughput throughout the town. So consideration is, since we're raising the vehicle tax from $15 to $30, $10 of that might be wisely spent on some of these extensions or connections. Thank you.
Town Manager Page?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. The prioritization of those projects in particular was influenced by a number of factors. When staff reviewed those, the road segment that we felt was the highest priority, which we actually ranked as medium, was the Morrisville East Connector. That is related to the extension of McCrimmon Parkway, and again, opens up area for development that we think development may end up being able to contribute and assist with some of that road alignment. So allowing that to happen more naturally is why we have not prioritized that. That is also similar for International Drive and Odyssey. The Town Hall, bike lanes, the materials provided, staff, again, felt the significant expenditure to do that could be, the same purpose could be achieved in other ways, through markings, et cetera. I know we're, of course, certainly willing to look at that, but that was why those recommendations were made. And I'm sorry, if I may add, and you are correct, any of those vehicle tax dollars or general fund dollars can be devoted to any of those projects. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
I was just going to comment on Martha's comments and Michael's comments. I appreciate the comments around the resolution for the CIP projects and explaining to the public that this is a moving target. I mean, we're clearly honing in on the 2019 projects, and then after that, it is fluid. So I appreciate your comments on that. And to Michael's point about the Public Works Facility, I know you said there's more to come, and we'll have a great deal of input on the design process, but I do believe it is an opportunity for us to have a statement building, one that's sustainable and green, and so I just want to echo that with Michael up front now, as we start moving forward on that design process, realizing we have great many more opportunities for input.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, and one more thing, I think, one important item, just to echo Vicki and Michael, is the vehicular tax is $2.94, I think, from the supplement that we will be getting, and also the one cent that we are collecting is almost $425 or approximately that. So it's almost like you can say, close to $6.75 or what that. So that's the amount of commitment that we have for transportation every year. So we got to come up with a plan that how we are going to spend it towards transportation. And I know, I don't know if the vehicular tax, it is for the road improvement, and for this other one that we are collecting, is it for the capital improvement? If we can basically categorize which are capital improvements and which are road improvements, that would be very important for people to, operating versus capital, so that those are two different buckets, and what we are collecting are two different projects.
Thank you, you are correct, and I think that's just another message delivery component of our budget process that we can promote in our messaging. The one, the one cent that you're allocating is for a roadway and transportation reserve, that you have done that two years and have spent no money, and that money can be used for, that's your choice of any roadway and transportation capital project, you have not limited yourself in any way. So you're accumulating that money to use for a project of your choice. The vehicle tax is related to road maintenance and repairs rather than development, design, and construction, but we, and that is housed in our general operating budget, as you know, that there are significant roadway expenditures every year that we're paying, and this helps us support and continue to accelerate those projects.
Okay, I'd like to pass it over to Budget Director Jeanie Hook, just see if there's anything else that she needs from us.
I'm not used to that. So I just wanted to check in, make sure that we can wrap up really the conversation on CIP. I'm not hearing that you're wanting to shift anything around, and am I correct on that? That as what the manager has presented is appropriate or adequate for this year? Checking in.
So we had discussed the, like, the potential for some type of shelter or bathrooms, things like that, in the food hub. Would that, should that be addressed in this number, or is that in some other allotment of revenue?
Kent is working on that request now to bring back to you what is doable and is not doable in a Phase 2. So he's been working on that since we've asked. I don't have a number to provide to you, there is $250,000 for a Phase 2 in the operating budget. That's another item, it's not going to be spent July 1. We do understand the urgency of trying to make it as close to going in there, but we will be bringing that back to award and with that information as well. So we feel like even if we don't have all of it right now, we have most of it, and if we needed some additional fund balance appropriations to support that project, we would request that.
That, one other question I just had in general, and this is from my own edification, and some folks had asked, there, when the media came out with a story about the increase in the vehicle tax, and, you know, every single municipality seemed to have one, I think we're mirroring Cary, if memory serves me correctly, and the question was, how did that come to be that, I mean, I don't remember us, I remember us talking about it, I don't remember it coming up, was that something that was across the municipalities? All the town managers got together and said, let's put a request in for, because I'm just curious how it all seemed to happen with every single town? And then ours is the exact same number of Cary, you know, and obviously Cary's going to, it'll be millions of dollars versus $450,000, but just, the question had come up is, how did it, how did it come up?
So managers do not get together and conspire with our individual councils, but we do talk about what people are considering for their budget. In our case, when we talk about roads and transportation every day, I think the best I'd have to say is, is we felt it was, it was time to recognize and to demonstrate to the public that we are listening and paying attention to where we want to spend our roads, and it's a partnership with all of the cars on the roads. Does it hurt that neighboring communities are doing the same thing? No, it keeps it kind of consistent. So it was, it was a logical and reasonable way to continue to put more money to our roadway and transportation needs.
So just as a point-blank question then, did all of the municipalities get together and everybody decided to do it so that one municipality didn't look like they were raising taxes and someone else didn't?
Absolutely not.
Just because it's ironic that every single municipality, pretty much in our area at least, increased the taxes, and so, again, out of transparency, because a question was raised, I wanted us to be able to go on record to say exactly how it happened so that the public wouldn't have any questions or lack of trust in how that happened.
No, as Jeanie and I work through the budget every year, we actually fully review and vet every revenue source we have. That's a standard part of the budget review process, and forecasting and reviewing what we're spending our money, that's all internal. What I was really conveying is, all of the communities in this area have the same types of issues, so it's not unreasonable that everybody would recognize that a available opportunity, for example, Raleigh has had the $30 for many years, and there are several other municipalities that did not adjust their vehicle tax but may have done something else.
$30 is the max amount. We've raised it in the past. In fact, you probably had people here on the council who've asked to max it out in the past.
There was a little discussion during last year's budget about whether or not we wanted to adjust it, and we chose not to. So it's not new, but I think it's, I'm glad that staff brought it forward, and I think the council is doing a good thing.
Right, I'd agree, and there's other fees that I'd like to bring up next year. Recycling fees, I think the same way, it works that way, it makes people recycle more, gets people out of cars.
And that is an example of another one we have talked about in them before. One of the proposals is just a review of our stormwater. We're not advocating either way yet, but we do provide a subsidy to an enterprise fund that you should be fully aware of all the information regarding our stormwater operations. So that is really one of the purposes behind that study.
Not to beat the vehicle tax fee, but the first time I heard about it was when I read that article, that everyone else was kind of doing the same thing, so, and I actually was kind of surprised. I didn't realize they were doing it either, so, and I agree with everything both TJ and Michael said, we've talked about it for a while.
I think Councilmember Wendell should vouch for me because he questioned some of the information in the article, and then I read him exactly what I sent to the reporter, and I think he may have gotten his first taste of, no, the newspaper does not always necessarily report everything that you've said.
So vouched.
So I think I'm getting the consensus that we can move on from this, that you are accepting really what the recommendation was that was put before you, and that's what we'll, we'll bring back to June 12. Okay?
It'll be essentially our two-year check-in on the CIP plan, and this is kind of our blessing that, in a sort of a formal way, even though it is fluid into the future.
Yes, and I would point out that you actually revisit this subject matter with your annual budget every year. So it's not like you wait for the next two-year cycle. You always get that opportunity to revisit because of exactly what Councilmember Slank was saying and Councilmember Johnson, is there's influences and opportunities that present, and you want to always make sure that you're planning for those effectively. Because remember, CIP planning is long-range planning, so we want to maximize the opportunities that are presented to us. And I have to say, this is a huge step for you guys, you should pat yourselves on the back, the long path that we've taken to really kind of deliberately plan policy and put things in place to get here is a great thing for our community, and it is transparent, and that's what it serves, to show the community really what's important. So you should be proud of the moment you adopt your CIP plan, that you've done that.
And one more thing for the sake of, for the transparency point of view is, Jeanie, I remember the first budget that we did is, a lot of external factors keep changing, and that is the important thing to remember, gas prices, if it goes up or down, that's an important factor. And one thing I was reading Cary, which is going through it, is the recycling fee, and especially with the trade wars within US and China, especially when they stopped taking the recycling, and that has imposed a tariff, how you do it, increase the entire recycling fee structures. So I don't know how our contract with waste management is, and when is it up? That's going to change our contract with waste management, that's going to change those contracts. So it's, there's this give and take, which I think every budget will come up, so sometimes we have a win, sometimes we have a lose, so it kind of all washes out at the end of the day.
And you are correct, we're already looking at our solid waste contract, and Chief Jenkins even told me a story today about somebody that was doing their own recycling because of the changes in the commodity market, so.
Okay, so I think we're in a position to wrap up unless I see someone who wants to say anything else. Okay, so just to review, we will be voting on the budget on June 12. There is still an open public hearing on the budget at that time, but generally, we didn't hear it from anyone last time, but that will happen on the 12th, and if anyone wants to speak, we welcome that. But we'll probably be approving the budget and also approving a CIP at that time. And now I would accept a motion to adjourn. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Town Manager Page.
Let's go ahead and let Jeanie review the documents, please, just so that you're familiar and make sure we haven't missed any questions for that. Sorry.
Yes, thanks. So I gave you in your packet copies of all the action items with the budget. Of course, there's just several items that you have to approve and verbally say out loud, so I just want to make sure you have a good, healthy understanding of what each one of these instruments does. So the first one is really your budget ordinance, that's your annual operating budget. So these are things that are on that annual cycle, so these would not be capital projects per se. So in here, you are going to have your legal budgetary limits that you establish for the organization in this next fiscal year, that covers the general fund, your municipal service district, your stormwater fund, and then, of course, any fiduciary funds that we have. So again, these are annual funds that we have to appropriate, and with the municipal service district and the general fund, is, the instrument is levying the taxes that are associated with them, and you have to do that each year, set the tax rate. Other things that this does that are, that's actually quite important, is it establishes your fee structure, your authorized position counts, it establishes the authority for pay and merit plan, that is very important, and some other legal areas such as thresholds for purchase orders, fiduciary funds I mentioned, legal services, so Frank's fees are always associated with this, this action item, and any special appropriations that you are authorizing the town manager to take care of you for, to take care of business during the year. So one of those is the use of lap salary, so we have some thresholds around that. That is the exact same threshold limitations that we have given her in previous budget.
And Jeanie, I'd just ask, sort of for the record, and for council member to hear, that what changes, if any, we made to this, just so that we call out any changes we made to the language from what you would have seen in prior years.
To what we would have seen in prior years, okay. All right, so obviously, all of the first part of the instrument, which is really your appropriation limits, those relate to really your, your appropriation limits, those relate to really what you're establishing this year. So those, of course, all changed, that's in Sections 1 through 5. In Sections 6 and 7, if you were to have had a change in your tax rate or any fees, and in this case, your $30 vehicle fee has to be called out here, so that is a change from last year for the vehicle fee. So it went from 15 to 30. The tax rate remained the same. We are required to publish an, an estimate for the assessed value that we base that tax rate on. The stormwater fee remained the same. The 10 cents for the municipal service district, that, of course, remained the same. The user fee schedule is adopted per reference, but in your budget report, you have the amended user fee schedule there, showing really what it was before and what it's, what we've proposed as changes in the back of that report. So it's adopted as per reference. Authorized position counts, well, anytime you're adding positions, you're making adjustment to what you're authorizing the town manager to legally have within the year of approved full-time positions. So that is something that has changed from one, I believe it was 175 to 184. Pay and merit plans are basically the same as they were last year. Purchase order limits are the same. Legal services remain the same this year. Frank did not have any other adjustments. All of the special authorities that you grant the town manager are the same. I think that's important to say.
What's your limit? $50,000 or? 50,000 with reporting to you.
And a total in the year that has two different points of measure, a grand total of 200,000, and it's split in mid-year. Okay?
How does that work?
So up to mid-year, she gets 100,000, and after that mid-year, going forward to the end of the fiscal, she gets another 200,000, but she had, another 100,000, 200,000 total. She has to report them to you in terms of usage and increments of 50K. Does that make sense? Okay. And then, of course, something that's actually really important with your annual operating budget is you're giving that authority that any outstanding purchase orders that remain open as of June 30th, you're allowing her to automatically reappropriate that without coming back to council. So again, that's another special authority that you have to grant each year for that to, to be taken care of. Martha, did it cover all of the ones you were thinking of?
Yes, I really wanted Jeannie to acknowledge that, that the authorities you give me, since I'm your employee, are the same. We have not made or recommended any changes to any of those authorities.
And all of these action items, I have to say, this is the governing document. This is what the auditors refer to as to what authorities we have in our legal limits budgetarily in a fiscal year, and what she has the authority to move around from one place to another. And that's what it spells out, and that's very important, a very important document to your business plan for your fiscal year. So let's look at our capital investment budget ordinance. So I will, I will tell you, this is relatively very similar to an annual operating budget. However, this is the establishment or amendment of capital projects. It's either establishing new capital projects that relate to your CIP, or it's amending existing capital projects. And this ordinance is actually not an annual ordinance in, in terms of what you're establishing with these specific projects, it's creating a multi-year budgets. So these budgets are called out very specifically for the items that you're designating, and the funds are available for reporting until they are complete, till the project is complete. Anything that remains available at the end of a project, you designate where that goes to. We're required to come back to council and move anything back, or in some cases, if we need additional funds, she has to come back to ask for additional appropriations. So these establish either an amendment to existing or create new capital projects that are identified and you're, are connected to your capital investment plan. So some other things that are very important, you have two resolutions. One resolution is something that you will always see, that is related to us telling Wake County and Durham County that they have the authority, that you are granting them an authority to levy taxes on your behalf and to collect stormwater fees. So we have to have this official document per Wake County, and Durham is a little different, but we send the same document to them. But this is an ask and a request from them to have you do this each year. And then the last one is an expression of your intent in adopting a capital investment program, and it really outlines the purpose of what a CIP is, really the meaning and flexibility behind those planning years, what is that capital budget, what does that mean, and, and really expresses your intent of, of how you conduct that program. And that's just a companion to your capital investment plan and your capital budget that you adopt each year. Are there any questions?
No, but thank you for adding that additional paragraph. I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, thank you for pointing that out.
So what Councilmember Johnson is referring to is, we added in a section that really addresses that community engagement, and so that was a change from the last time. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so by going through all that tonight, that means we don't have to go over that the 12th, or will you be going through that again, just so we're, we know?
I will probably generally cover it. I will not cover it in the detail that I did tonight, but I thought it was fair that you have some understanding of what each one of those instruments were. I think sometimes we just take for granted what they mean, but we have a lot of new players, and I think that was an important exchange of information.
I agree. So Town Manager Page, okay to, okay, thank you very much for making sure we covered all our bases there, I appreciate it. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
He had to say no.
So is that a 7-0, Councilmember Schlink, or is that a 6-1? Okay, that's a, that's a yay. I'm sorry, it says 6-0 unanimous.
6-0.
So thank you very much, everyone. Great job, and we'll see you on the 12th.
Thank you.